To start this meeting. Obama asked for a motion going to executive session. This Steinbach as a first, Mr. Buno as a second, all in favor. Motion passes and going into executive session. I'm gonna call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. Prior to everyone's arrival, we are at the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just want to say thank you for inviting us to Red Mill. It's a pleasure to be here, see this auditorium and to see the wonderful staff that has worked with my children throughout the years. We really appreciate, you know, all that everyone do for our children for sure. So attendance, we have currently Ms. Kimerzki is out at the moment. She is expected, expected in shortly. We've done a pledge of allegiance. See there. Executive session, we address the executive session. So we're going to start with our student council representatives Cole Hardy and Natalie Prisanda.
Good evening, everyone. In today's meeting for student council, we discussed our plans to decorate Columbia for the holidays. We are planning to collaborate with our club to have more help this year since they always do such a wonderful job with their holiday display. Each of our hallways is turned into a winter wonderland celebrating different holidays.
We also discussed more about our holiday activities like pictures with Santa and our administration at Columbia. Additionally, we plan to continue our tradition of bell ringing and adopt a family. In addition, we plan to make Christmas cards for teachers in one of our upcoming meetings on December 11th.
Lastly, we plan to facilitate a used winter accessory drive at Columbia where all donations collected will be given to a local homeless shelter. That's it for us recently. Thank you so much. Have a nice night.
And we're going to move on to the Red Mill Elementary School presentation of Character Education Program Portrait of a Graduate. Ms. Willachi.
Well, thank you, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Education members and Mr. Simons and to our crowd here. It's always a pleasure to have you here at Red Mill School and we're really excited about our presentation tonight. We have some of our members here of our character education team. We actually have 14 of our staff that participate on that committee. We have Ms. Griffin, our library media specialist, Mrs. Harling, who's our speech pathologist. Mrs. Petra Melis is our social work and Mrs. Harrison is our fifth grade teacher. They're just some of our 14 members on our committee. We're excited tonight because we want to tell the board a little bit about what we do at Red Mill. And I always tell my teachers, I've told them a few times, my very favorite part of the day here is being outside on that curb as our kids come off the buses every day. They are smiling, they are skipping, they are joyful, they are running and have to be told to stop sometimes. They are excited to come to school every day at Red Mill. And, you know, we'd like to think that it's about the reading and the writing and the mathematics and all the great things that we do for academics because we do. But I think it's really because of something else. I think it's because of the things that you all probably remember about your childhood. It's the traditions, it's the celebrations, it's the special events, the things that create the memories of our heart that make it so exciting for these little ones to come to school every day. And a big part of that is our character education program. At Red Mill, we go beyond academics and creating a student who's ready for the world. We look at the whole child, we look at their social emotional development, how they interact with one another and the type of skills that they can bring in their futures to their careers and their relationships. So tonight, we have a special program for you. We're going to do two, three things. First, we're going to show you an overview of the Portrait of the Grad, Portrait of a Graduate. And I know, I think it was Ms. Steinbach that had asked, how are we integrating that into our schools? So one of the big places we're integrating our Portrait of a Graduate is into our character education program. So it only made sense to talk about that a little bit tonight, too. We had a way of introducing Portrait of a Graduate to our students in September and we kicked it off and we'll show you how we did that through a video that our fabulous library media specialist, Ms. Griffin did. She might get a second side gig when you see these videos tonight. You're going to be amazed that she not only is a librarian extraordinary, but she's a major media mogul here. The second video clip, which is about three and a half minutes, is an overview of our entire character education program. I want you to watch those slides in the video very closely because in it you'll see not just our amazing staff. There's 70 of us here at Red Mill. You'll see community members in those slides and they're part of our character education program as well. And of course, you'll see the smiling faces of Red Mill School. So pay attention to those slides. And then the last part of our program after those two videos will be Mrs. Harling kind of giving the board a little bit of a real flavor of what we do at those character education assemblies. Because one of the things that my team focuses on when they meet together as a committee is how can we make sure we're not getting stale with what we do at our character at assemblies? How do we make it fun and exciting for our kids? And we are fun and we are exciting. So without further ado, I think we're going to turn it over to Mr. Goodwin to show us our Portrait of a Graduate video. Thank you.
Here at Red Mill School, we can do all that we can to help you, our students, be ready to take on the world. In fact, our whole school district is starting something new and exciting this year and it's called The Portrait of a Graduate. When we think of our students graduating, we wonder, what do East Green Bush students need to succeed? And I wonder, how are we going to teach our students those skills? I have a few of our teacher friends that are here to help us. We're going to start with Mrs. Hayes and she's going to teach us about our first learner trait. Come on down to Mrs. Hayes's room with me.
At Red Mill School, we hope you will be confident learners. Confident learners are not afraid to try something new. These students are curious about the world around them and want to explore new ideas. They ask questions and seek out answers. Confident learners may take on new challenges this year. They don't get discouraged when something doesn't go their way. Or if they need a little extra time to understand a new lesson. Confident learners stay positive. Mrs. Harling, what else do we want for Red Mill students?
We at Red Mill want students to be effective communicators. Students who are effective communicators know how to share their ideas. They may be sharing these ideas out loud by volunteering to share in class or they may be sharing these ideas online. Effective communicators are not afraid to teach others, encourage their friends to keep trying and are always ready to listen. Effective communicators need the depth. The best communication is a conversation where all voices are heard. What do you think, Ms. Coin?
I'm so glad you asked. I think Red Mill students shine brightest when they are adaptable. Adaptable students roll with whatever comes their way. These are friends who can adjust with something that goes wrong and still maintain a positive attitude. Adaptable students listen to what others have to say and respond positively to both praise and criticism. They understand that everyone here wants to help them learn. Adaptable friends are also willing to admit when they're wrong, which we know can be a difficult thing to do. They know that it's okay that we don't always agree. Now I want to hear from Mrs. Dear.
I love that Ms. Coin reminded us that we don't always have to feel the same way. When we can listen and learn from friends who feel differently than we do or come from different backgrounds, we can practice being empathetic. Empathetic students show kindness to others when they seem down and celebrate with others when they're excited. They are caring and compassionate. Empathetic friends are respectful of each other's differences, no matter if those differences are our opinions, our experiences or our cultures. Empathetic friends can also use their own experiences to connect. This can sometimes be how we make our very best friends. And now I want to hear from my good friend, Mr. Senkey.
Thank you, Mrs. Dear. Lastly, we hope the students here at Red Mill School are critical thinkers, which I think ties all our skills together. Right now, it might not seem hard to figure out what critical thinking means, but I bet you already do this. Critical thinkers are willing to try something new to find a solution. They ask themselves, if that didn't work, what if I tried this? Critical thinkers are always trying to get a little bit better at what they're already doing. They think clearly, stay open minded and are not afraid to ask questions when they don't understand. That sounds pretty adaptable and like an effective communicator to me. I think that just about covers it all. What do you think, Mrs. Willachi?
You are absolutely right. All of the skills that we are going to highlight this year are skills that you are already developing. Our goal is to start celebrating that learning through our character education assemblies, our student shout outs and our new Golden Key Awards. And all of us here at Red Mill School know that our students have what it takes to be successful and be the best version of themselves. We look forward to seeing where this year takes us together. Because just like Red Mill motto says, when we learn today, we lead tomorrow.
So we introduced that video at our first Character Ed Assembly of the Year in September and the students loved seeing their teachers' faces on screen. I do want to thank all of those teachers who aren't here with us today because they didn't know that they would also be shown to the whole school community at our Board of Ed meeting. But they were really great sports about it. Many of them even stayed, came in early and stayed late so that we could film that for the students. Now we're going to show you a video that introduces everything we do here with Character Ed. It was super fun to make and I think the kids were more excited about being in it than the teachers were, which was always fun. So Peter, please, thank you so much.
At Red Mill School, we take character education seriously, very seriously. In our halls, we emphasize character education every day. From our morning announcements on the WRMS show to simply walking down the hallway and seeing the names of our kids of character proudly on display. Red Mill students are surrounded by character education and character celebration. Here's how we do it. We start each month with a character trait we want to focus on. Our character traits range from respect and honesty to our Portrait of a Graduate goals like empathy and adaptability. Student news anchors give examples of how to embrace that trait on our morning news.
This month's word is confident learner. You can be a confident learner by not getting discouraged if you answer a question wrong. Wrong answers can lead to better understanding as long as you're willing to ask why the answer is wrong.
Different school community members take our character traits to a whole new level each month by decorating our front display case and putting together a presentation for all our students to see at our character education assemblies. Simple enough, right? But it's not just enough to learn about character education. We want to celebrate and recognize when our students live these traits. Each morning, we recite our Character Ed pledge where we swear to be kids of character at school, at home and online. Which brings us to our kids of character. These are students nominated by Red Mill staff to get a special shout out in front of the whole school. And if that wasn't enough, our students even have a chance to earn a prize for their good work and dedication, making it all the more fun and rewarding to be recognized for your good character. But what about on our buses? We've got that covered, too. We praise our students for showing good character on our buses, bringing our amazing transportation department in on the fun. Students are nominated by their drivers to be named Best of the Bus and our whole school sings along to our Best of the Bus anthem. Entire classes can earn shout outs with the Class of the Month prize. This recognition is earned when classes demonstrate good character in our special areas, in the lunchroom and on the playground. And yet, there's still more. Starting this year, we've launched our Golden Key Award where two students will be honored each month for being exemplary kids of character and truly embodying our Character Ed traits. Photos of these students are proudly displayed in our halls and they earn a special golden lunch. At Red Mill, we love to see our students shine. The work we do all year culminates in June at our Character Education Walk where Red Mill students proudly parade around our neighborhood and we come together as a school community to raise money for a local charity. Our students see that having good character also means having a positive impact on the world around you. Character education is embedded into the very fabric of Red Mill School. From our students and our staff to our generous parent teacher organization and incredible community heroes, we all come together to be good citizens and always do our share. As we know well here at Red Mill, when we learn today, we can lead tomorrow.
Well, first of all, we need to give props to Curtis Senkey for developing and producing the song Best of the Bus for the entire school to sing at each character education assembly. It was a work of musical genius. But more importantly, we want you guys to really feel the fun and excitement that we have at every character education assembly at Red Mill School. So since you have demonstrated such fantastic character, each and every one of you, your names are all included on our random spinner here. And if you are the lucky person whose name is revealed, not only will you get bragging rights, but you will also get this fabulous, fantastic goody bag. Now, you must be warned because here at Red Mill School, all of our assemblies are very loud, fun and exciting. So if your name is the one that stopped on, it's going to go off with a bang, okay? So Peter, can you please start our spinning wheel? Congratulations, Mr. David Arnold, you are the recipient of our goody bag. Now, we hope that the rest of you guys continue this great character so that maybe your name can be put on the spinning wheel again and you can win the goody bag. Thank you all for participating in our fun and let's give a hand to Mrs. Flaschi for the next entire presentation.
Well, thank you very much and if you have any questions of our team, you can certainly ask. But we hope you enjoyed getting a feel for what we do at Red Mill. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willachi. I just wanted to say that like I can really appreciate that the work here at Red Mill really helping children, you know, not just, you know, internally Portrait of the Graduate, right? Understanding yourself, right? Adaptable internally, but also applying it to the outside world, to the outside world socially. That that work has been getting done before Portrait of a Graduate was a thing. You know, I can personally attest to sitting with all of you, you know, and talking about, you know, how to help, you know, you know, push things forward and I really do appreciate the work. And I also appreciate the matching it with the district goals of Portrait of the Graduate, though that work has always been here at Red Mill. Moving on to approval of the draft minutes for October 30th, 2024. Was anybody absent on on the 30th of 2024? Nobody was absent. Alright, so I'm gonna have a, okay, thank you, Jenny. I'm gonna have a motion to approve the October 30th of 2024. Mr. Buno, a second, Ms. Turner, all in favor? All are in favor, motion passes. Moving on to approval of the draft minutes for November 6th, 2024.
Everybody.
Thank you, Jenny. And is there a motion to approve these draft minutes? Ms. Van Orton, a second, Ms. O'Brien, all in favor? All are in favor, motion passes. And I'm gonna open up the board forum, starting on my right, Ms. Steinbach.
Just want to, you know, say thank you. I appreciate being here and that that was fun and a great surprise. Woke me up a little after a long day, so thank you. Also, just want to give a shout out to the girls soccer. You know, how far they made it and really the efforts of all the individuals and the team is outstanding to see.
Thanks so much for having us and for the great presentation. And I know she's not here tonight, but just wanted to thank Marissa Cannon for her time in her HR capacity with the district.
Just pretty much echo what everybody said. I always like being here at Red Mill. I was educated here back in the dark ages, so it's always, you know, sweet to come back here and recognize things. And again, recognizing the girls soccer team, we're so proud of how well they performed and how far they went. And same sentiments to Marissa as well, wishing her well as she moves on.
Yeah, the presentation was fabulous. It was a lot of fun to see the smiling faces, soccer team, Marissa. I also want to give a shout out to our school psychologists and our SRP staff. Last week was psychologist week and yesterday was SRP recognition day and we couldn't do what we do without them. So I just wanted to give them a shout. That's it.
You know, I just wanted to really comment on, I love the optimism too. You know, I know, I know K through five, there's a lot of transition, you know, and I know sometimes it can be a challenging. You know, it can be challenging, you know, educating at this age with so many transitions. And I just want to say, you know, keeping the, driving the optimism, driving those principles. I really love seeing it. I really felt it, you know, and I just wanted to just thank you though.
Thank you, Red Mill and all they all.
Good, thank you.
I'm gonna say thank you for that lovely gift. That was a lot of fun. Also, thank you for that presentation. I was really struck by, by two parts of it. First, I loved how with the character traits, you gave concrete examples of how a K to five student can meet those. Because I think sometimes we hear critical thinking. What does that mean in kindergarten? And I love that you gave them that, that real like direction. I also loved how you included the Best of the Bus because I do think our bus drivers are often kind of forgotten and they are absolutely essential. And I just love that. I thought that was just a fantastic way to include them in the school community and emphasize the importance to our students of their time on the bus. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Van Orton. Alright, moving on to our public forum. Resident students, employees and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or the superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the, for the record, their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Are there any comments at this time?
Thanks, Mark. Mark Taylor, my daughter goes to Columbia and that's here. I wanted to say hi. My last week, the high school hosted the world high school. Hosted by this guy again and this, I just wanted to compliment them for offering an opportunity to allow students to know more than just college. I acted worker Hudson Valley, so it's invited on the police side, but they also invited a number of other groups, including like a contractor or a carpentry, electrician. Just thought it was a great way for students who wanted to see what else there was to happen. So I just want to give them a shout out. I appreciate that. If you do that, I hope they do.
Thank you.
Alright, no other comments. Going to move on to our 2025, 2026 budget considerations and guidelines. Mr. Simons?
Thank you, Mr. Temple. Typically, after the holidays, we begin to explore and make some serious considerations regarding our proposed budget for next school year. And typically it kicks off with the governor making her State of the State address, followed by her budget proposal for the state of New York. Last year, there were some proposals in the governor's budget that ultimately did not end up in the final budget. But some reductions in projected state aid did occur. I was somewhat encouraged by a meeting that I attended with the New York State Council of School Superintendents last Friday in which the budget projections of the state have been adjusted and they are not as significant in terms of the projected deficit for next year, approximately $1 billion. We have dealt with over the years, $10 billion, $5 billion. So the numbers in terms of state revenues look a little better. And there's a sense that, while we don't know exactly what's going to happen, that, you know, some of the potential reductions in state aid could be potentially adjusted because of changing economic circumstances for the state of New York. Nonetheless, as we develop our local budget, you may recall last year that we were quite limited by the tax cap. We also had projections for state aid that came in better than many districts locally, but still less than what we were anticipating. And we've added programs and services for students over the last few years and those programs are being very beneficial to the students and well received by the community, such as the universal pre-K. So my goal always is to make sure that the budget process adheres to the board's guidelines as well as what the board would like to see in terms of accomplishments within the budget and information needs. So I just wanted to start the conversation this evening with asking the board to give us some considerations regarding where you would like us to look at areas of the budget where we would ultimately want to wind up in terms of the budget. Some suggestions I made in the board update include maintaining all of our academic and academic critical programs, for example. Striving to work within the tax cap if we can. Making sure that we are careful and prudent regarding our use of reserves. Making sure that we're data driven in terms of when we look at support programs for students that we are making those decisions regarding the needs and the data that shows where the needs are. So for example, in academic intervention services, special education, mental health services. These are all areas that the board has expanded because the needs of the school district, basically all school district in New York state have expanded. So we try to be data driven about it so we can use those resources as efficiently as, as possible across our seven schools. But those are just some areas that we always think about. There may be some areas that the board would specifically like us to take a look at this year or present information on and we'd be happy to do that. So I just wanted to have a start to the conversation tonight with understanding that we'll have many more opportunities as we move towards the budget cycle to talk about the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Any comments about?
Yeah, I mean, I can bring up one and I think we've had some prior conversations about this, but just like continued sort of expansion of the pre-K program and then, but also kind of looking at the services at each of the locations and just what's being provided and like, how could we sort of level set that, you know, like if we're providing lunches at some, provide lunches at all and that kind of thing. And just, I think the continued strive to actually universal pre-K.
Thank you.
I think I'd like to echo that and say, you know,
I think I'd like to echo that, um, and say, you know, equitable, uh, and making sure that, you know, that services are offered across the board. I know, you know, the lunch thing as well, um, is something that we've talked about and, um, would definitely love to see a conclusion to that. Um, but I think, um, having that lens is really important in moving forward.
Thank you.
I would echo the same, and as we look at making what we have now equitable, just long term, how can we make it sustainable as well? Um, we don't wanna offer and have to pull back ideally. We don't wanna do that.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna add, um, and, and I, I know we're approaching tough times right now, um, with the uncertainty of, of revenues in the future. Um, I, I would love to get a picture of our current day expenses, you know, real time for how we was projected. And I know we were talking last year about trying not to spend 3 million of fund balance, if I'm not mistaken. And I would just love to know, like, from what we projected and how expenses typically is expended, how is our trajectory looking now? Also, I, I, I really, um, would be remiss not to mention SROs, which, which our community largely supports if there's a way for us to, 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 to look towards it. And I'm looking at last year's data, I'm thinking about how, um, economic disadvantaged children as students with disabilities, um, looking at their performance and graduation rates, um, and, and thinking about how we can improve our numbers and, and how significantly, you know.
What else?
I would just like to, um, make sure that we're considering class size. I know we've looked at that on multiple occasions and make sure that it's equitable across schools, but making sure it's not just equitable, but also ideal and beneficial.
Okay. Thank you. So I have a look for ways to expand UPK. Um, looking at the distribution of services across all of the schools in terms of ensuring that they're equitable. Uh, striving to maintain the lunch program, which is currently free, uh, long-term term sustainability of the district's budget. Um, looking at our projections for current expenditures, uh, in terms of a fund balance, projection of how we're doing currently. Um, with our expenses now revisiting school resource officers and also making sure that we can support, continue to support and address the needs of economically disadvantaged kids and students with disabilities. I'll put together more of a polished kind of summary of the conversation that I will distribute it to the board. And we'll use that as our marker as we continue to look at the budget and represent various information to the board. And again, school district budgets are generally driven by the revenue and the revenue of the state and local taxes are the two primary, um, sources of revenue, state aid, local property taxes. And then we have our pilot agreements, which are a fairly significant source of revenue for our district. A little bit more than $6 million on average. So we'll start the process of trying to develop some tools and some reports for you, um, that address some of these areas as we get more information.
Thank you. I, I do wanna apologize for not taking a pause earlier. Um, there's, there's some trees over here. So, I don't know. Uh, so, so let, let's take a brief pause and, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. All right, getting back to our Board of Education meeting, uh, moving on to our second discussion, discussion item. Um, Community Engagement and Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee Report, Mr. Simons?
Uh, yes, I'll just kick this off and then I'll ask any board members who've been part of this process to, uh, offer additional comments. Uh, one of the areas that the board discussed at the board retreat in September was to, um, look at our approach to strategic planning and to try to determine a process that would involve more community input, which is a very good goal in terms of, uh, reflecting where we wanna go as a district for the future. There was a subcommittee formed to take a look at, uh, the process that we might follow. Uh, we invited a superintendent, Dr. Kevin McGowan, from the Brighton Central School District, which is a top achieving school district in, uh, Western New York and a Rochester, to present a process that he utilizes in his district to engage the community in the strategic planning process on an annual basis. And he also does this type of work as a consultant for the superintendent's, uh, New York State School Superintendent Conference Council, as well as, uh, uh, other organization. So, um, the committee thought that it was a very good process. It is a process that would be able to be done this year, typically in the spring, and, um, is eligible for BOSI's aid. And he does this process with many districts. And I'll ask Emily, and I know Jennifer wasn't at the last meeting, but Michelle was there if you wanted to offer anything. Uh, in addition, I think it would be wise to do this and it's good timing.
Do you wanna add?
And Kim, Kim was there as well. I'm sorry. And, yes, it was there as well.
Um, I know we've talked about it before, but just if, if folks, you know, don't remember, um, you know, we're looking to do a strategic plan for the district, really looking at long-term goals and understanding, um, how to make them and best practices in order to do that. Um, so this, this, um, engagement and, um, we really appreciated, um, this conversation. And it has, uh, it seems like it is not the first time, um, this has been done. It's kind of like a model, um, best practices. And, um, we really appreciated the fact of how thorough it would be, um, how we'd be engaging with, um, different folks in the community. Um, but I think the part that I really enjoyed and felt that there's so much value in is that, um, we could do a survey. We could try to, um, you know, ask folks and, and go out there and we'll still have to get the folks to actually do it, right? But, um, it's really getting all the information back and then a- aggregating that and figuring out what, what it is people are trying to tell us and where to go. And, um, you know, that's, that's a unique skill. And I, I think that, you know, um, looking at the district and talking with, you know, superintendent about it, um, it's best, I think it's best done, um, you know, by, by someone who is very skilled in this and can do it. And, um, one of the things that, um, really sold me was that, um, he spoke about, you will only get back what you ask. And I just felt, wow, you really get it because, um, we could ask very pointed questions and we could say, you know, yes or no, click here. But really, um, he's looking at more open-ended questions and seeing where people are. And that, there's a lot of value, I think, in, in even the approach. And even more so, taking that information back is even more labor intensive. And, um, I think that, um, if we were to do this, um, it would, it would allow us to be in a really great position to make very strategic, um, long, long-term goals. And, um, the best part about this is that it will be, it would be wrapping up right along when the, um, um, a potential new superintendent wouldn't be starting. So not, you know, we'll have a leadership change, but we'd also be able to hand them kind of like, and this is where the district currently is, and this is where the community is, and this is how we see it forward. And making that and having that be a conversation with the new, um, superintendent and really being able to, to make that strategic plan together. I think it's, 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 um, something that would be great to offer, um, a new leader and one that I think any new leader coming into the role would be ecstatic, uh, to hear. Um, so I don't know, hope that, that's probably more than you wanted, but, um, hope, hope that helped.
Cover most of it. I really liked the open-ended nature of the thought exchange and the fact that we wanna put it out to not just parents and teachers and students, but like the, the broader community. And we'll think about ways to do that, but it wasn't just gonna be a school district community. We're trying to access the community, the larger community for this too.
So looking at some of the documentation, just for my own benefit. So we currently have a mission vision. We have some, we don't have really core values, some of those pieces. Also, the work that's been done through the Portrait of a Graduate and focus, uh, of our goals, is that gonna be incorporated into this process as that, if we go forward, is that how that would?
From my conversations with Dr. McGowan, for example, the mission statement, the Portrait of a Graduate, the things that we have in place, that are already developed. There'd be a process to get a little input on that, possibly revise a few things, but we basically keep the core of those components in place. And then where we were, uh, in need of developing more long-term goals and those kinds of, uh, goals and vision would be based on a process that not only does a survey through a QR code process, but there's a process where administrative team, the board, and a group of community stakeholders sit down and look at the survey results and interpret those survey results with a very structured process and develop, you know, areas that the, that the, that the board, the administration and the community stakeholders feel, set a pathway of a direction for the school district moving forward. It's really in the goals areas and the strategies areas that the meat of the work occurs, but done in a way that's very deliberate and a set process. So it's, it's not, doesn't carry on forever. It's very, very structured and he, he comes in or, uh, he or somebody else comes in and actually guides all that work.
Yeah, so he'll, the, I think it was, you know, we'll have an onsite meeting with the person. Um, I think the board and leadership, how we define, I don't know leadership yet, but, um, it would be a collaborative meeting. And I don't, honestly, Mike, I don't feel like there's any harm in saying, does this mission statement still fit? Does this, you know, vision or what are our core values? Are they still aligned with, you know, where we are? And I personally, you know, I haven't been here long, but I don't know all the historical context. And so I do think like giving the board, if we're looking at making a strategic plan, um, I think we would be remiss if we did not even ask that question. I, I don't know if the answer is everything stays as is, you know, with that. Um, but I think that there's value in even asking that question.
No, I think, um, in my experience, the, the mission and vision is strong. I think it needs to be reviewed.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I do think that. I think it's important that, that we do take a real hard look at that because I think it predates me. Sorry. Terms of our word service. But I think that's important that we do look at all those things and, and always looking at the historical, the traditions that are important to the community as well as moving forward to incorporate those things, but also knowing that the world is changing and we need a, a good solid process. I think this will help put some structure around it and, um, you know, value that community input piece that it probably has been lacking.
I wanna, I wanna say too, like, in, in education, the processes, um, change relatively slowly, right? Like, it could be a three to five-year process to implement Portrait of a Graduate, right? Like, or, or let's say, even if we say one to two, like, what I'm trying to say is, it don't happen overnight. Change don't happen overnight. And when we think about, um, so, 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 so when we think about informing, you know, and I, I think that the only, only way to approach community input is with an open mind of, you know, what can we do, right? That, that's how to engage, you know, and think critically about, you know, what, what's available, you know, to change, but with the anchor of, you know, um, stability, you know, and making sure that it works for everyone, for the kids, for the educators, um, for, for our direction generally. No, I, I definitely understand that point. Thank you, Mr. Fionna and Miss Steinbach, Miss Turner.
So.
Is there a resolution to go forward?
Um, yeah, I think you could do it verbally in re- resolution to authorize Superintendent me to enter it, uh, enter into a contract with, uh, through, basically I would have to follow through and contact Dr. McGowan, ask him to, uh, set up a cross-contract through BOSI's to, uh, get these services in place. And then there may be a approval you need to do later on of the cross-contract itself. So just looking for a verbal authorization to go forward with it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to go forward, but as articulated by the superintendent. Everybody okay with?
Facilitate a cross-contract with Dr. McGowan through the BOSI's.
There you go. Jeanie, you got that?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do think we have time too, because I think the projected start wasn't until like later spring. So, yeah.
He suggested after the budget.
It's what, what we call in state government, a sprint. Once it starts, we're all, you're all force until the end.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I'm moving on to the Sorenseco Rotary Project for, for East Green Bush Central School District. Silence.
Just a couple of months ago, the, uh, some of the officers of the, uh, Sorenseco Rotary asked to meet with me and, uh, looking for a project that they could support financially within our school district. And so I sat down and I met with them and they became familiar with a project that happened in the Schenectady School District with the Schenectady Rotary. And they wanted to invite the Schenectady Rotary to come and talk about this idea for funding, fundraising and a community center. I had a conflict, so I asked if Emily would go and Jennifer would go to the dinner meeting, and they did. And I'll, I'll let them report on, on the meeting, so.
Sure. Do you want me to go first?
Um, so, so it was a very, um, productive and informative meeting. Um, I'll, I'll give you some highlights and can definitely answer questions. So essentially, um, the, this Rotary, um, club in, in Schenectady, decided that they wanted to support the school district somehow. Um, and they, all throughout this presentation, it was ingrained that like, we wanted to, you know, provide supports for the district, um, but identifying what that was and how we would do it was really up to the district. In the end, they opened a community room, which includes washers and dryers and i- in one elementary school. And it was, um, an elementary school that is, you know, um, economically disadvantaged and was on like, you know, um, not a great, not a great path. And so they were thinking that the supports would mean the most or would have really helped the community. And, um, so what this Rotary, um, club did is they helped, um, fundraise and they did, um, a few different fundraisers. They got community support, so they got sponsors. Ended up being like a cornhole, um, tournament. And, um, that's not really, you know, the part of it. But, um, in learning about this, this, um, Southern Rensselaer Rotary Club, I was very interested and then, you know, was looking to the district to see like, A, do we feel like this partnership would be worthwhile? Uh, would we be interested? And then B, it's, and would be looking at us to determine, you know, where, like, where the need is and, and what we would be, you know, interested in. And, um, you know, so, so it was, um, great information gathering. And I think that, um, the Rotary Club, um, is very, very interested, um, in helping us and, and finding a way, um, I call them like wraparound supports or like, not necessarily like education related, but what, you know, is there anything preventing or in the barriers in the way that, that, you know, that we can help, you know, alleviate so that kids can show up, you know, more authentically or, 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 you know, in, in a better light to the school day. So, um, you know, it was something that I think, you know, Jen and I, um, was, were, was really interested to hear. Um, and I personally loved the way that it was a whole community engagement. Um, the sponsors, how they got out there and talked with people. Um, and it seems like, um, you know, the, the Rotary Club is, is the funding for it, but it's really a partnership and a collaboration, you know, with the district and the community. And, um, I think, you know, I was thinking, you know, you know, my background in, um, you know, health and human services and how people, you know, how people, like the barriers in which they, you know, prevent them from showing up. And I think, um, it would be really, um, a great opportunity for us to think about, is there anything that this district needs that, A, we don't have the funding for or we can't use funding for, or there's something outside that, um, that, you know, we could possibly meet the needs of some students, um, in the community. Jen, I don't, do you wanna add anything?
I think you summed it up, but what was really remarkable is how dedicated, um, the Southern Rensselaer County Rotary is and how. And how much service and how they're very interested in, in looking to us as a potential next project. They just, they were a wonderful group of people and really um, dedicated, you know, to helping others. So um, definitely an opportunity for a potential partnership, you know, with some needs identified as to what best fits East Greenbush. You know, versus what's connected to have presented that, you know, that particular district's needs, so. So it was a nice, uh, it was a very nice meeting. Great opportunities.
So one of the. Ideas that was originally discussed, and again, it's based on what we identified together as what our needs are, was some type of a community room or some type of a community center. And, you know, when I had an initial discussion with former Superintendent Terry Brewer as part of that group, Dr. LaHaine is part of that group. There's a gentleman named Peter Brown, who's retired state, I think he worked as a social worker for the state. And um, Dr. Martinez, Roberto Martinez, they talked about, well, what are the needs of the district? And so one of the, one of the things that we have is a growing N L population uh, in the district. And uh, we also have really expanded our backpack programs for economically disadvantaged families. So yeah, this would be kind of a logical next step in terms of creating some kind of a permanent center. It could be a room, could be two rooms at a school that was centrally located, that would have resources for families. From, you know. Food, access to services, literacy, and how to navigate. You know, I think one of our meetings on the Committee on Global Education, we talked about helping families figure out how to navigate. The community's resources that are here and how to navigate the school district. So it was a very conceptual, uh, we'd be interested in input from the board, but um, that would be the idea and. You know, I think it would be good timing if we. Want to start this engagement with Rotary to raise money. To define what it is we want to do. And then secondly, a location and if that location. Required some level of minimal construction. We have a capital project coming up and I don't know that it would necessarily add a lot to it to build a room that had. Was like a, a room that was open, would be open during the day potentially with a separate entrance and it would be.
It's, it was a separate entrance, right, and available. And it was kind of like, um, the Rotary Club raised the money, but then the district put all the parameters around it. And um, you know, there's washers and dryers, there's actually, it's like a kitchen too. And they got appliances donated from um, one of the foundations.
It was actually one of the local retailers.
Local retailers, um, but they really um, like utilized a bunch of, um, you know, resources to do that. And they said that, you know, um, it's really driven by the needs and wants of the community. So what they originally established, um, you know, now that, now a community member does like a cooking class. Um, for, you know, for other community members and um, you know, so I think we would have some leeway in figuring out what, what works best for us. And then, you know, it's, it would be a conversation with them on, um, you know, what, what, you know, their contributions could potentially be.
You mentioned the cooking class and I was reminded that we've, Jennifer brought this up two years ago, I think. We had a pretty good uh, program going for um, adults that wanted to come in and take continuing education. Uh, courses and it's kind of fell by the wayside after COVID. So maybe the concept could be you have a family resource center and, you know, that's all, that space is also available for. You know, learning a hobby, learning a skill, bringing in an outside, bringing, you know, you could bring in vendors, Home Depot or local people that have certain skills. And people might want to learn how to winterize their house, for example. Uh, or do uh, or, or learn a particular just hobby or craft.
Yeah.
And even having, you know, um. Intergenerational activities in the space where you bring in seniors uh, to work with kids on a particular skill, teaching them how to use an iPhone. Or use the technology and you have that and, and that also spills over into community support. For the school district. So it's, there's, there's just a whole array of things you could think of. That a community center concept could support with a lot of things that would have to be figured out, but I think it's. It's opening up the schools in a way that extends itself to the community and addresses very needs. That may not necessarily be academic, but spill over into families feeling. Uh, that they have the resources to support their challenges, education. And that we're broadening our role, our mission, to make sure that we're not only taking care of the kids, but we're taking care of the families that take care of the kids. It's a good concept and then the Rotary folks are very, as all the community groups are, uh, organizations are very benevolent. And um, they just want to do good projects that help people, just like the other clubs, other affiliated clubs in the region.
Quick, quick question. Is this expected to be at no cost to the district? So this is all Rotary sponsored? Are we thinking, I'm just wondering, like, when it comes to expense and projection, like, are, yeah?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
That they raised.
Yeah, they raised all the funds, yeah. So the, the school district had the space, Jesse, and then they raised the funds and then had a carpenter come in and do all that. Um, I think it was a lot of in-kind, right, for labor and stuff. Um, but they really networked and, and raised that support with the community uh, for, to figure that out. But it, it was not, nothing was on the school district and the school district did not um, do any asks. Um, that all came from the Rotary Club. The one thing that the school district helped do was um, share that, the fundraising event. Um, and you know, just, you know, share it with the community, the school community.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Ms. Steinbach. Another question I'm just wondering too, so like, when we talk about them being in a space and I know it's pretty early. Are we thinking like the space that's created for them, is there space or is that something that the school is going to use? Or so I'm just wondering like just dynamics around.
Well, we haven't made, we don't know. As you understand, we have, we don't, we would have to figure out a space.
Okay.
Whether or not that space would be completely dedicated to this program or whether it be a shared space of some kind. We, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
They had it in an elementary school that like, they didn't use this portion or this room. And it actually had an exterior entrance and so it was very easy um, for safety and all of that, those concerns. Um, but it technically was, is district. Building.
And the only reason why I'm asking is just because like dedicated space have associated costs like electric, you know, utilities, maintenance. So I'm just wondering just, you know, final budget impacts. And if we say it's a dedicated space, I just want to delineate between, so just that thinking as the conversation develops, that's just where my head was at in regards to it. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think this is such a lovely idea. Um. I do, and I, I like, I, it sounds like the initial investment is maybe covered through funding, but then what about the programming? And like, I would hate for us to build something and then not be able to sustain it and really kind of think about the longer term. What do we want this to be and that kind of thing? And I guess is the offer from the Rotary this or is it? Like, are they open to other, do they want to replicate what happened in Schenectady or are they open to other ideas?
I think they're definitely open to other ideas, um, and what, what the district needs. And they made it very clear that like, you have to tell us what your needs are and then we can have a conversation about. What, what we possibly think we can, you know, assist with. So I think, I think it's just uh, like a partnership collaboration. I don't necessarily think anything is set in stone. I think what Schenectady needs, right, that elementary school is probably very different than maybe what, you know, our district needs are. Um, but I, you know, it was, it was more like they just loved the idea of helping, you know, and doing the supportive things. And filling in gaps really is what I heard, like what gap can we fill that the district has? And so they also said that like. They do the fundraising and, 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 but it's really um, also community driven. So someone o- offered like, you know, people do their laundry there a lot, right? But then someone offered like to do a cooking class. And so um, it's also a space, I think, where the community then also has an input. It sounded like over, over a longer time and, and where, where they feel like they could help as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think just in, um, you know, some of the prior conversations we've had even around. Just like access to existing programming, like the trips that the students take, like the eighth grade trip. Like is sponsoring students who can't do that an option and maybe a little bit more sustainable or fills an immediate need versus, I don't know. So maybe I think like, is it, we want to sort of formalize a partnership and then brainstorm ideas or is that what we're?
I think that's.
Yeah.
We're still at an exploratory stage. The community center idea was something that happened in Schenectady, but it's not.
Yeah.
They're open to other ideas and I do agree that the conversation about sustainability, the costs and the program longevity. Need to be part of the planning process.
Yeah, you hate for this wonderful thing to then like sit dark or, yeah. It's quite some, it's wonderfully generous. I think it's a great, yeah, great opportunity for our partnership.
So we just wanted to have continued conversations with them to see if we can define this a little bit better and address some of the issues that you all talked about tonight through the sustainability. But we wanted to just brief the board and let you know that the Rotary Club is very interested in supporting us in some way.
Thank you, Ms. Steinbach. All right, next, next is regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Um, is there any questions or comments? A motion to approve. Mr. Mann, is there a second? Ms. Turner, all in favor? All in favor, motion passes. Moving on to appropriation of insurance recovery funds. Are there any questions or comments? A motion to approve. Ms. O'Brien, a second. Ms. Phillips, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Approval of budget calendar, Ms. Mulligan, did you want to, or?
Uh, yes, so we have um, the budget calendar on the agenda. Uh, it was a discussion item at the last meeting. So um, there wasn't any other changes other than adding uh, the discussion that was had about the budget guidelines tonight, just to formalize that in the itinerary. So I didn't know if there was any other questions or feedback and then there was that one date movement for the public hearing from May 7th to May 6th. Um, and you know, that was still on there. Um, so anybody had any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan.
Thank you.
And we need a motion to pass this, correct, right? Uh, a motion, Mr. Buno, to pass the uh, calendar, Ms. Turner. As a second, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, calendar is approved.
Can I just, can I just point out that um, the budget orientation workshop, um, you know, Jen, thank you for that. But um, if we're interested in that, folks need to mark their calendars because it's not a board meeting. So I know all of our calendars fill up. If you're interested in doing that. Um, do, do save the date in the calendar.
Good reminder of all of you.
All right. Moving on to the school bus stop arm enforcement program, opt-in agreement. Are there any questions or comments on this? Miss, Mr. Mann?
Yes, comments, questions, I have both. So is this a request? Is this request coming from the county, the town, bus patrol? Bus patrol. Bus patrol. And have we touched base with the county on this? My concern.
Not since our meeting.
Is we had Jeff and I and Tom Grant from the Ratchet County Legislature had met. And there was some concerns about the, the, the concept, 100% support. It's, it's more of the, the paperwork funding concern is what the county brought up. And, and I had concerns and I know that the town as well had some concerns, so. Prior to doing this, is, is there an expiration date on the, on the current? Something we have currently?
Yes, this, this op, this is an opt-in agreement. And. It, it's my understanding that it expires on December 1st. All the districts in Rensselaer County that participated, and I think it's the majority of them. Opted into the program. There's a separate contract between Bus Patrol and the county, Rensselaer County. And all this contract does is authorize the company to maintain the equipment on our buses, cameras. And if there's, they, they've installed them at no cost to the district, if there's a maintenance issue with them, they, it allows them to keep their equipment on our, our buses. On page one, C. If the county determines to terminate the master service agreement, then this is null and void. So that's really something that the county has to make a determination of. The concerns were that. The county wasn't making a lot of revenue on this at all. Okay, in terms of the fines that they collect. And there was some confusion about that. And we talked to Tom Grant about it. I think he was going to look into some issues with it. But this doesn't bind us to anything other than. Keeping the equipment on our, on our buses and it's been reviewed by our, is that correct, Jennifer?
Yes, yeah.
And separate and apart from this are some challenges that the municipalities are having with enforcing this. And personnel in terms of, you know, the town of East Greenbush, which is the largest town where most of the violations have occurred. The manpower in tracking this and collecting this, so those are really concerns of the municipalities. The county supported this program through a contract. Thus far, it doesn't seem that the revenue distribution, which is part of a separate agreement. It doesn't include the school district receiving revenue. That some of that stuff is materializing in the way that people are anticipating when the contract was first entered into, I think I. So you understand, Mark?
So if I just.
So this is just about the equipment, maintaining it on the buses and it's, it expires December 1st. But I do plan to follow up and I did a follow-up with the town of East Greenbush a little bit about this before we put this on the agenda. Because they have been trying to get some questioned, answered, questions answered from Bus Patrol as well regarding this.
Yep, absolutely. Um, is that, as long as that's all this is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supportive. No, I, I was a big proponent of getting the cameras on the buses and I think it's a, a. A great project that we, we undertook, took several years for us to. Get it in place. This is the second, if not third company since we originally started that. Bought this company. Oh, there's just some, some, you know, internal.
Yeah.
Funding stream pieces that, you know, I think. We should reengage with the county and the municipalities to, uh, you know, look back into and. Find out what's going on in the county. I know it's going to get the county attorney to, to reach out to the company and I just wonder. That has happened, if we could continue that process.
I'll follow up on that.
And, you know. Haven't seen a report lately from them as to the number of. Yeah, we were getting them. Every other month, you know, but so September, October, November, be a good time for a report now. And again, my biggest thing was I don't, and I mentioned it before, is I don't think that the, the data, their caption is, is correct. Because, you know, they were just giving us East Greenbush. It weren't more than just East Greenbush.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that when we reach out to them, that we let Bus Patrol know, well, it's. This town, this town, this town and this town, because we cover, you know, five towns, right? So, you know, I just want to make sure we're, we're getting the uh, correct data.
Very good.
But I do support it and I will make a motion to, to accept that.
Excellent. Um, and, and not just for, for, for clarity is the, the, the county has to, for this agreement to work, the county has to continue to support. The program, is that correct?
Yes, this is null and void if the county no longer contracts with Bus Patrol for the agreement. And you, and if, if that happens, we can no longer use their equipment. There's a provision here that says that we won't use their equipment if the program is terminated.
Okay.
So just here in the beginning, there was, there are municipalities that entered into their own contracts with Bus Patrol, with the city, Rensselaer. So just here in the beginning, there was, there are municipalities that entered into their own contracts with bus patrol, with the city, Rensselaer.
Yes.
Is, goes via far with bus patrol and not through the county one. So.
Okay.
There, there, but that would be up to the municipality.
Okay.
To negotiate with, with bus patrol. Obviously, everybody needs our buses in order to make this happen. But, you know, that's a, something that the municipalities have to. Did we jumped on board with Rensselaer County because, um, there was a lot of other school districts that were interested. The county passed the county law. Otherwise each town would have had to done it. So, um, the county agreed to, you know, be the lead. And we all went to this to say, yeah, we'll, we'll take it on under, under Rensselaer County.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mann. All right. And a motion to approve, Mr. Mann, you said. Want to motion to approve it? A second, Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? All is in favor, motion passes. Moving on to the agreement for the 2025 flexible benefit plan services. Is any questions or comments on it? Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Turner, is there a second? Mr. Buno, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Next is a resolution authorizing return of the warrant of unpaid taxes to Rensselaer County Treasurer. Resolution approving tax collectors' report for fall 2024. Ms. Mulligan, did you want to?
Sure. So this is a report of, um, we just concluded our tax collection season. Um, and there's always an unpaid warrant that we have to return to, uh, Rensselaer County, who then would, um, re-levy, um, the unpaid taxes. Uh, the town and county tax bill is coming this January. Um, the county makes the school district whole in terms of its, uh, tax levy. And the district would normally receive those funds, um, usually April, uh, timeframe, uh, next spring. And then, um, just in relation in terms of, uh, comparability from year to year. Um, this was very comparable in terms of the uncollected amount that was returned to Rensselaer County last, compared to last year. Um, it may have been point one four percent higher than last year. So it was negligible, maybe eighty thousand dollars more. So it was, uh, equivalent to what we've seen in, to last year.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. And that did spark my memory of something I wanted to ask about related to the budget. Um, and that was about, um, the apportionment between homesteads versus, um, businesses. I, I would like to, at least for conversationally, take a closer look at that, especially as we approach this year's budget. Um, just thinking about, um, how do we, um, think about our households, um, and, and try to make it equitable, you know, for everyone. Um, you know, no matter the direction that, that we need to go in.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I need a motion to approve, um. To approve this resolution. Ms. Turner, is there a second? Mr. Mann, all in favor? Everyone's in favor. And a motion to approve, uh, standardization resolution for radio equipment. Um, there, there's a special radio.
Jennifer can explain this better than I can.
Actually, if any of our administrators may be able to help. So, um, the district has, uh, portable radios that they use to communicate within their buildings. Um, we typically have purchased these, um, specific type of, types of radios off of a state contract. However, that state contract has expired and is in the process of being renewed, but we have a need to purchase additional radios. After evaluation of our need for this year and what we've purchased thus far. It is appearing that we're going to be exceeding the competitive bidding threshold. In order to do that, under general municipal law, we need to standardize officially that equipment. In order to specifically bid out this particular type of equipment. So this is basically authorizing that standardization. Um, and then our bid is actually set to go out, um, tomorrow. Um, so we can get bids returned, um, to be able to secure, um, the radios.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan.
And, and the, the standardization is really so, you know, our buildings communicate with each other, um, effectively. So if there's different radio brands, it's, it won't work very well.
So it's to build on our existing infrastructure of radios. Excellent. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I just have a quick question. Who, where in the district administration does like radios and programming live? Like who? Who owns that?
So our facilities director and coordination with our building, um, principals, uh, that's usually goes through his office.
And is there a motion to approve the radio standardization? Mr. Buno, is there a second? Ms. Steinbach, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. And establishment of the 2024, 2025 event chaperone rate is, Mr. Simons?
Yeah, this is not a new rate. It's just something that typically has been approved. Separate from the, um, reorganization meeting. We're planning to do it at the reorganization meeting next year, Jen, correct? It's a sixty dollar rate, which is comparable to the supervision of athletic events rate. It's not a new expense either. It's something that we've been doing for some time.
Is it open to all staff?
Um, currently it's for the high school and the middle school. Um, usually that's where the chaperone rates, uh, the chaperone need is, um, for some of our staff. To go beyond, you know, what perhaps our PTOs need to at the buildings.
So they happen at high, the high school and.
Yeah.
But do we ask, do we ask staff in elementary schools if they want to? Or do we only ask staff in the?
I don't know if there's a, a need at the elementary school based on the types of events that are on there.
The question is, is it open to anybody to be a chef?
Right. Or is it only open to the high school and middle school teachers?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that either.
That this is.
I don't know whether we paid chaperone rates in the past, elementary folks that do supervise after school activities. I'll get, I'll have to get you an answer on that.
Or are we asking, that's great too. The original ask is that when you need a chaperone for an athletic event? Who are you? Is there a listserv you use? Does it go to all teachers? Does it only go to teachers of that building?
For an athletic event, those are the, those are the individuals that you typically appoint at the organizational meeting or shortly after. For a dance. I think it's typically, uh, you know. Advertised in the building, we need X number of chaperones to, uh, supervise the snowball or the prom. And then I think that that's happened within the building.
Yeah. And, and it's pretty.
I don't think it's a formal posting process.
Yeah, and annual expense, I think it may be not even five hundred dollars. So it's very limited.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not worried about that. I'm just worried about if someone is interested, who, who works in an elementary school, if they wanted. Are they, are they being tapped? Or do they have the opportunity, right? It's, are we asking the same folks over and over again? Are we giving, you know? Opportunity. I don't know if people want to do this. They hate doing it, whatever, but.
I'd have to talk with the principals about that. I don't, I don't, I'll talk, I don't know the answer to that.
They probably don't want to do it, but I, you know, it's, it's, it's across the board.
I'll get you an answer.
All right. And is there a motion to approve this resolution? Ms. Turner, is there a second? Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Um, I'm wondering, I'm wondering about the, uh, RFP resolution. Like to, to approve, uh, is it on?
So we, we would need a, we need a motion to add an item to the regular agenda. Regarding the superintendent search process.
Okay. So to, to, Ms. Steinbach, um, to, to add this resolution, Ms. Turner, a second, all in favor? Everyone's in favor to add the resolution for the RFP process. Um, and we also have to modify the language. No, so, so this resolution, I spoke to Ms. Mulligan, is fine on the surface. We spoke earlier about needing to modify it, but this resolution just authorizes us to pursue an RFP. Um, for, for board consumption. And then the language of the RFP, I think, is what we were thinking about with the if, but just, you know.
It's, it's my understanding that the board would like to move forward with a resolution in the event. There are circumstances in which you need to issue an RFP for a search consultant. You have authorized that. But it's in the event that tho, that decision has not been made yet. But you don't want to wait till a future meeting in the event that you need to do that. So I think the language is in the event that the board. Needs to issue an RFP for a search consultant for the superintendent search. You're authorizing that to occur without having to come back and vote again.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
If needed.
No, no.
Now we're good.
That works.
Verbatim, that's, I think, sufficient.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the, uh, resolution? Mr. Buno, is there a second? Ms. Turner, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. And moving.
We just want to make sure that, that Jane, that the, that the minutes reflect the wording that. I put forward to the board and that the board just approve it in the event. That there's a need for a search consultant, the board has authorized that.
And moving on to committee reports, uh, Mr. Stiles?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Temple. Uh, I'll be, I'll be brief. So we had a CCS meeting on November sixth. At that meeting. Uh, we do have this year, three program reviews, one for health, one for physical education and school counseling. That work, uh, has begun, um, meeting with those groups in the next few weeks to, uh, continue to, to get updates. Uh, they're not at a point yet to ask for any endorsement on any sections. They've just began that, uh, begun that work. We had, uh, seven presentations of summaries from summer curriculum projects, uh, all really great projects. If I remember correctly, I believe, um, uh, Janay, when we are there next month, I think is going to talk a little bit about one of the projects that is going on in their school. Um, which is around the bilingual achievement project. Um, but again, um, really great presentations and a lot of great work that happened, uh, this past summer. We did approve some new titles, um, one title for, uh, one of our senior electives. And then we did approve, uh, eight new titles that are specific to our CTAP program. Uh, again, the presentation regarding the need for those titles was, was really, you know, really, really good. And I think the, the teacher, you know, selecting those titles was very mindful of the need of the students. Um, so we're really excited about, about those new titles there. Um, I just gave a brief overview of the New York State regionalization, uh, some terms that are kind of coming up. That, uh, we're working on right now. Um, a regional, regionalization needs assessment, which is a requirement through New York State that we have to do. That is, I believe might be due on December fifth is the, the date for that. So, you know, I just gave a brief overview of, of, uh, just, uh, you know, a summary of what that's going to mean. Uh, and then we talked a little bit about professional development. We have a half day. Um, of PD on February seventh. On March fourteenth, we have a full day professional development. We will be participating in Questars Regional PD again. Always a great day, really positive feedback that always comes from that. And then our last, um, professional development day for the year is on March thirty first. I brought forward the idea to this committee and then also talking with the, the PD committee and the administrators. Um, having a day that we're calling a day of leading and learning, where we're going to be asking our staff members. To put in proposals of some professional development that they would like to offer to their colleagues. So we're doing a really in-house, so everyone is, you know, learning from each other. Um, so we're really excited about that. And, and the feedback, you know, regarding that has been really positive. So excited. It's a summary.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. All right. Moving on to committee reports, uh, on cell phone, on the cell phone committee meeting, Mr. Simons?
Yes, very briefly, we did have our first meeting of our committee to study our current cell phone policies and practices, particularly at the high school. Uh, the committee was represented by board members, teachers, students, administrators. Uh, it was a good exchange. We discussed a lot of different, um, aspects. Regarding cell phones, um, including, you know, different options for, um. Having them not out during the school day, um. Arranging from the yonder bags to putting them in their lockers to also talking about instructional uses. And whether or not we would have a policy that would permit them for certain instructional uses, because for example, in art. Teachers like to use them for, uh, the cameras and other, uh, uh, methods of instruction. So this is an ongoing process where we will continue to study it. And Mr. Harkin has set up a visitation for us. Our committee to go to Troy and Bethlehem. To see their practices, uh, they have just re, Bethlehem has had a use of the yonder pouches for a couple of years now. And Troy has just started it this year, I believe. And Mr. Harkin, the date of that is.
December twelfth.
December twelfth. And a, uh, board members are, on the committee are Catherine, Jennifer and Kim. And we had good, good exchange and good input from the students and the staff. We also have our representative of our security supervisors on there.
Can, can I ask you a question? Um, I know the middle school has already implemented, what are we doing in the elementary schools? I, I'm assuming it doesn't happen often, but I'm sure there are cases where kids may have cell phones. And, you know, in the fourth and fifth grade.
I think it's very minimal. I, I never hear about it, actually. Mr. Garib, you want to, Mr. Squatchy or Mr. Kringa? It's, it's a limited, limited product. I just ask them to put them away.
Believe I can probably speak to all five schools. Uh, the rule is if they have a cell phone, it stays in their pocket.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, can I just add, um, I thought the meeting, I, I can't go unfortunately on the visits, but I thought the meeting was really informative. The students had a lot of interesting comments that I didn't anticipate. They weren't totally against making changes to the policy. And for anyone listening, no decisions have been made. This is an exploratory committee. Um, but the teachers also had really good points, like you said about art class and photography, occasionally they'll use their phone on, or their camera rather, on their phone. And, um, students talked about just kind of being in the habit if they're working on a lab in science class now, to take a quick photo of the notes on the board. So that when they go back to finish up at the end of the day. So there's a lot of, um. Nuances and things to consider in terms of making any changes, I think. So. Interested to see how it goes.
Thank you.
Do you know of any, so sorry, do you know of any districts that, um, maybe haven't used the yonder pouch bag? And have, um. Some sort of abridged, because it seems like you're engaging with schools who have an all-out ban, but you have just, you know, said that.
There are different storage units or just storage, uh. Options that in some schools that don't permit them to be out during instructional day.
Oh, right. Okay.
Teachers collect them and they put them in a, uh, like a shoe holder. It hangs on your closet in some cases with all the different pouches, or there's a, some things that are specifically built that you can put cell phones in. But yes, some districts have implemented they're not to be used during the instructional day. And use these other types of means to.
Oh, okay.
To, um, control it.
Perfect. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Burn Hills and Ava Park, uh, has like the, the coat, like shoe rack, Mr. Time is at the back of your doors. And then soon put them in there. They're allowed to use them in the hall, they're allowed to use them in the cafeteria, they're allowed to use them in the study hall. So they're still seeing issues of, um, bullying, um, recording of behavior, you know, negative behaviors in the building. Troy, Bethland, they don't see that, you know, Troy was even saying how they, they, you know, they're barely having a fight that you had last year. It's down sixty-five percent.
Wow.
So, um, you know, if you and I have an issue and I don't know you're in the building, just you almost text me that you've arrived. You can just go to school for the day and not be distracted with your, uh, your having a sleep. You get that phone, they get it out. Uh, so we're also anticipating the governor making an announcement in their state of state. So we'll see. But I think there'll be something, Mr. Simons, that'll be distributed effectively.
Yeah, that's what we heard at the discourse meeting too, from a representative of the governor's office, that they are going to come out with a, a requirement for some, for all districts to have a policy. But it won't be an all-out ban. And it will be, have some parameters on it in terms of, you know. Not having them accessible during the instructional day potentially, but leaving it up to the districts as to how they manage it.
Do any of them, and I'm assuming not, have it, um, different in a school, but different in grades, like, okay, twelfth grade might be a little bit different than a ninth grader. Cause there is a somewhat of a, you know, difference in, and I think it would be too hard to manage. I'm just wondering if.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Part of the conversation that came up too, um, with the students and they were a mix from ninth through twelfth grade students. Part of the conversation that came up too, with the students, and they were a mix from ninth through twelfth grade students. We talked about, you know, could you use, or some of the teachers already have like the shoe rack type thing on the back of a door. For the most part, I think they self-admitted that the temptation is there and they feel like they would just, if they were left to their own devices, that pun, they would just go back to the phone. And then some of the teachers also offered that when students put those phones in the shoe rack or whatever, they're savvy. They put fake phones in. And so when they don't collect them at the end of class and the teacher's like, don't you want your phone? It's like a burner phone that they don't care about. So I wouldn't have thought of that, but, um, yeah, it was just a lot of interesting information across the board.
Sounds like a great committee to be on.
What's next?
Hard to come on that.
So we don't have any table motions or no table motions. Old business is the Board of Education email listserv. Comments on?
So I put this back on. I know there was a conversation at the meeting that I missed regarding it. And I tried to combine two things for you to give some comments on and feedback. One was to deal with the issue of making sure that the public is aware of who's receiving the email, when it's sent to the BOE email. And the other one was Emily had attended a workshop at the New York State School Boards Conference, represented by the Vernon Verona Sherrill School District, on how they provide information to their public on who to contact, who to call in the event there's an issue to try to reinforce the chain of communication and to make it easier for people in the community to know who they are to contact about a particular issue. So I took the Vernon Verona Sherrill one and asked Mark Adam to work his magic. And he and Questar put together this draft, which I just received this afternoon, so I posted it. And you see that if you have an academic question, we encourage parents to talk to the teacher first. And then if their issue isn't resolved, they go to the building principal and then up to the central office athletics. We encourage kids and parents to talk to the coaches before they go to Mr. Jones or Mr. Harkin or to me. And so in every area where there might be a question, again, taxes, if you have a question about taxes, call the tax collector, Cecilia Casca, who's the first, first line person in the best position to be able to solve your problem and provide you with more detailed information. And then at the bottom, we put a statement that if your issue hasn't been resolved after following the appropriate steps, you may contact the Board of Education by sending an email to the BOE address, which then says all of the board members, the superintendent, central administration, receive this email. If you want to contact the board only, please email the board president and we just did the board president. This is just a sample for comment and feedback. Again, we're certainly open to changing it, but I thought this would at least guide the discussion a little bit.
Yeah, I love this idea. I remember it coming up at the conference. I'm wondering if individual schools could personalize it a bit in terms of school personnel? Could we make it like for red mail fill-in? There might be parents who don't know the name of a principal or know the direct number. So maybe do
Okay.
district-wide, but also school.
Very good.
I was in, in light of that, I'm also wondering at the high school level, if it's an academic concern? Did we want, um, I don't know, we had teacher and then principal, would department head go in between there?
Or guidance?
Or guidance. That's what I would think, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get some feedback from the high school. Cause we did have guidance in another area and we did have department, I think we had department chairs under curriculum.
Oh, cause I was thinking it used to be teacher, then guidance and then principal, right?
So if you look at under, um,
There's a guidance, it's the second one on the, in the middle. But if folks don't feel like that's an accurate depiction, you know, we can move it or.
Right. We take a look at that was a notebook from the middle school.
Maybe at the secondary level, maybe we have something a little different.
It might fit better under academics.
Or, or leave both. I mean, you can be reaching out to guidance for academic or, you know, some more personal type thing. I, I love it. The little caveat I have to say is when we add names, we gotta keep it updated. It's gonna be a little bit of a pain, but I agree with Jen. I think we need to have it names. I'm just saying that it'll have to be unlike some to do, you know, when people leave or change that we have this being updated.
We might have to link this to a specific building document, just for the purposes of, you know, it's a lot of information on one page, but I'll, I'll work with Mark on that.
I'm wondering too, if, if you don't know exactly which department it fits in, like where do you go for just, you have the information, you don't know which department, who do you talk to that?
You, that you do this QR code? And it goes to the communications and then they'll forward it to the appropriate person, which I think is great.
Yeah.
Really, it's like a catch.
People do.
Okay. I just have to say that QR code did not stand out to me when I was looking at this and it might just be me, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
It's a busy, it is a busy document and I think that, you know, we, but it's, I feel like if it's all inclusive, then you have this one pager where, you know, we can share. And as a board member, I think that this is also very helpful to me and every other person. So I can, when community members bring up concerns directly to board members, yeah, we can listen and help out, but we might not be the best person or the correct person to, you know, really steer the person. And this gives me a framework as well to not just go right, right, you know, and to, to say, oh, have you seen this chain, you know, or do you, do you see, let me send you this cool document. So I really appreciate this and I'm, I'm, I'm really glad we adopted it or will adopt it. One of the things that I was looking at, I saw, which I think is unique to this one, is that we use First Step. There's secretaries on here. And so I just am a little unclear. And I don't necessarily, maybe I just misinterpret that their role, but there, there being the first step that people contact, right? Like what are they answering versus, you know, for finance and budget?
I think they're steering it to the right person. So it might be a question for Jennifer. It might be a treasurer question for Mary Rizzi, might be an account payable question and there's an account payable clerk. So, so Eugene is like the air traffic controller. Besides where the call is going to land.
And also has a wealth of knowledge too, so.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense. It's more like farming it out to the appropriate person. Then if they needed to, after that appropriate person, then they would go to Jen if they needed clarification or needed additional help. Okay.
Insurance question would be another example. We have a lot of people that call about insurance and benefits. And so they may call and they may not know we have an insurance clerk. So they might call the business office and say, well, I have to go over to Michelle.
So does that same logic apply then to pre-K? Because pre-K is very specific. So Michelle is listed there as the number one.
Yeah, because Michelle is under Roy. And because we have, you know, she generally handles the registration process and troubleshoots things that.
Yes, for pre-K, she usually is the, the first point of contact. A lot of the questions are, is there still an opening at this location and things like that? And that's something that she really has a good handle on. If it's, if it's something that's a little bit more information needed, she'll direct it right to, you know, she won't say, oh, call Mr. Styles. She'll say, hold on a second, let me get Mr. Styles. Or if, you know, someone talks to her and they don't maybe get a full answer that they want, they may reach out to me separately. But very rarely do, um, do I get a call that, you know, someone spoke to Ms. Dorothy and didn't get the answer that they needed? Or, you know, she didn't just get it directly to me.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Just a question on the, so Jesse, you're the main contact from the community to, to the board. And then what are your, like, will you also be the person who will respond and copy the board on your response to that?
That is a great question. I think that's the appropriate way, way to handle it. Yeah.
So when, when you respond, you won't, I mean, the person emailed you because they wanted to go to directly you. So when you reply, yeah, well, I mean to the board. So when you reply, I, I would keep it to the board only if you're following.
Yeah, yeah. I hear what you're saying.
I think we should, we should put that into board policies and procedures. Um, maybe fold that into, you know.
So what, what I'm wondering is though too, is like how to distinguish between the emails? So, so, so I think what, what I'm hearing is, is that, right? Like, so what I'm saying is just like, are there ever emails just to me? And I, and I, you know, like, is, how do we delineate, you know, between someone's intention? And I understand like the role and, and representing the board and that emails to, you know, and I'm just trying to just say that, you know, what I don't want to do is someone email me and it's like, you know, Jesse, I was emailing you, right? And it's like, you know, so.
There should be no need for one person to be emailing.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
It's, it's a board.
It's very, yeah, yeah.
If an individual is emailing, wants to make contact to the board and your contact information is the only one there.
Yeah.
Which I, nothing against you, Jesse.
Yeah.
I don't think it should just be one single person.
I know what you're saying. Yeah, yeah.
I think there should be.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I would agree with that. Yeah.
And the vice president. And then if there is a response needed, then the response would be CC, the entire board.
So rather than have it be Jesse's email, if they only want to communicate with the board, we could set up another email address. That would be board officers. Or I've seen VVS's document had board clerk on it. I don't know if you want that or not, but all the communications seemed to, to the board went through the board clerk.
That's about the same as one person.
In some districts, it's still one person. So if you want it to be a separate email, go to the board officers, then you have the assurance that it's not just going to one.
Right.
The board procedure would be the board officers would review the email and then distribute it to all the board members.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, and I'm also, so like, I, I really do, like, I did like your comment about emails to one individual. And I'm just wondering, like, generally, is that how all of us are feeling about emails to us as individuals? I just want to make sure, you know, that, you know, we have a common norm about communication every seat as individuals. And what does it mean in regards to communication? And I'm just wondering general sentiment around emails to you as an individual member? Like, how do everyone feel about that?
Yeah, I think that we need to put that into like our board nor, the norms we all accept in our policies and procedures.
Okay.
You know, about if someone contacts you, you know, as an individual, what, what do we all, what norms are we all agreeing to doing?
So over the years that I've been doing it, I think it's only happened a few times. And to be honest, it was the same email sent to all of us separately and we kind of started sharing with each other. Also happened during COVID, I remember. So then at that point, Mike or Mark would respond, you know, we'd be like, hey, we all got this email. Yep, let's, let's respond together. And that's the only time I really recall getting individual emails. For the most part, it does go to the board email address and, and we, and Mike would usually respond.
Okay. So my own advice is if you set up an email that the person's, well, I don't want to send it to the administration. I just want to send it to the board, which was the issue we have discussed. That it would go to an email address that would be board officers. And then I think best practice is that if an individual board member in your capacity as a board member receives an email from a citizen, a community member, an employee, I think best practice is you forward it to all of the board. I think that's really the protocol.
And, and the other thing is when we respond, we obviously, you know, Jesse would communicate with you. I would see this and, and you might be adding on Roy or Jennifer or, you know, like, that's okay, but have a conversation about it. This was only sent to the board, but Roy's gonna help take care of it. So we're gonna add Roy to that as well as respond to everybody else.
I think we should add that to the board policies and procedures subcommittee. As like one of our norms.
Okay.
I think this is excellent. I have just one language issue. I don't love that you may contact the Board of Education. It sounds like I think we.
Well, please contact.
Yeah, I just think it sounds a little bit more.
It sounds like you're giving them permission.
But I think this is really great.
Right. Okay, good feedback. Appreciate it. But in general, everybody's supportive of this.
Looks good.
We'll flush out the procedures and.
And then just have a version date at the bottom.
Okay, good.
You know what I mean? Like version one, mid-November twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
And moving on to the consent agenda, is there any questions or comments or anything needing to be pulled out? None? Is there a motion to approve? Ms. O'Brien and a second, Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, the motion passes.
Just want to thank Marty for
Yeah.
coming out of retirement.
He's not here today. He was in the office today though, working with Marson. I just want to emphasize this is a temporary, this is a temporary arrangement and we're going to be a little stretched, but we're gonna make it work.
Thank you to everyone for those efforts.
Moving on to the addendum, is there an addendum on here? No addendum? Any new business? No new business? And the last public forum? Yes.
Dan Wagner, I live at two Johnny Place, East Greenbush, employee of the district, secondary vice president of the EGTI. I wanted to take this moment to thank the town of East Greenbush, specifically Lisa O'Brien and Donna Millet, Home Depot. And Hannaford, we had for the eighth time raking the lawns of local veterans on Veterans Day. We had over a hundred volunteers. I want to thank the local Cub Scouts, the local Girl Scouts and my own troop forty-one for Boy Scouts that came in the first shift at nine-thirty. And then countless EGTI teachers and a ton of students. We had about fifty seniors and juniors, NHS students, bunch of students. And we raked over twenty lawns and it only took us until about one o'clock to fill over three hundred bags. So I just wanted to thank the town specifically, because they're really a big help in that. And everybody else a part of it. It's a, it's a great day and restored my faith in humanity every time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. In our last public forum, Ms. Van Orton. Well said.
Sorry I was late.
Oh, it's good things. I was able to attend the veteran celebration at Janay. Pretty done. Wonderful celebration event, celebrating our veterans and their families. Who gave so much. And then just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, staff, community. I hope we've had a wonderful break and get a chance to relax.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Ms. Turner.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, I know Mark's mentioned it before and I don't know where we are with it. But the gentleman who spoke at the first public forum talked about the, beyond the high school options. So I know we talked about signing days or ceremony for students going into the trades or service. I'd really like to see that happen.
I think that's a great idea. We did do a separate award ceremony. We recognized those kids at the high school last year. If you were going into the military or going right into the career, career, we did a separate ceremony. But I like the idea of a recognition.
Yeah, or even if they're going into an apprenticeship to, you know, become an electrician, whatever, be a nice idea.
Excellent. Making note of that, Mr. Harkin?
Um, the, the calendar that was started of signing up for school events is super helpful. So thank you for putting that together. And I think to what Dan just mentioned, maybe it's even in our partnership with the Rotary, we start to expand it to community events that we want to kind of connect the district to.
Um, I just wanted to piggyback on the veterans. I was able to attend the Green Meadow assembly and it was really great assembly. We had, you know, county, county legislation, town exec, or county executive office, sorry, I'm tired. There's, and, you know, we had a hundred and two-year-old veteran and that made the paper. I'm sure, I'm. There's, and, you know, we had a 102-year-old veteran and that made the paper. I'm sure, I'm sure folks saw it. But it was a really great assembly and I was happy, happy to be a part of it and hopefully can go in the future. And I love the calendar too and going to more events and more things, PTOs. Recently went to the PTO and all sports as well. It's been a busy couple of weeks, but it's worthwhile, I think, hearing from it. And I will say that, you know, the all sports club, they were very appreciative. You know, that I was there and and I felt like, you know, I didn't contribute much at all. But I was happy to sit and listen and and hear the, you know, the good work that they're, that they're volunteering their time for as well.
We appreciate the board members' interest in participating in the school activities. I, I talked to the principals today about the calendar and what the purpose was and also to, to encourage them to reach out to you if there are events going on that may not be on the calendar and that you just want to be visible and supportive and understand what's happening in the school district and support the effort. So appreciate it very, very much.
And I forgot to mention, the book fair at Goth is open tomorrow night during parent teacher conferences.
All right, and we're going to have a need for executive session.
One topic related to the employment history of an individual.
All right, we need a motion to go into executive session. Ms. Comerzky, is there a second? Ms. Steinbach, more in favor? If he wasn't in favor, motion passes.